All right, good evening everyone. We'll call to order.
Get that gavel.
We'll do. Thank you.
He's always wanted to do that.
First and last on, we'll call to order the meeting of the Board of Education for Thursday, November 29th, a business meeting, and if you'd call the roll call please, Ms. Jenkins.
Ms. Dunbar?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Ms. Fiesel is absent, Mr. White?
Here.
And would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda, and I believe we have one or two?
Yes, actually two. You did receive the addendum regarding item B4, Superintendent Action Item. We added Clay Tuggle as a resignation, and also item C, the graduating senior list that we had, we're adding one name, and that would be Austin Schmidt. Those are the two additions, and we have one item that I would like to pull off of the agenda for later notice, and that would be item, Superintendent Action Items, item A5, supplemental position I have, I want to get board members additional information on that so we can vet that entire topic.
Okay. I wonder, move to add first reading of Policy 5113.01, intra-district transfers to the agenda, which reads as follows: Should an intra-district transfer be approved, the district will consider the transfer to be valid for the remainder of the student's academic career. And I'll submit the suggested policy to the treasurer to record that with the minutes, please, and attach it.
Well, I wonder, Adam, if this wouldn't be better to, as we discussed over the telephone, to wait for a work session in January?
I reached out to you in October and November, and the superintendent, and asked this to be added to the agenda, so I wrote it on my own, and it wasn't added, so I'm moving to have it added now.
Is it one of the policies that we've already reviewed and approved? It's not on this one?
It's part of current policy, it's an amendment to a current policy.
Is it one we've reviewed already as a policy?
Isn't that correct, Linda? Yeah.
Has the policy committee seen it?
It's previously, no, the committee has not seen it.
I'm submitting it now for a first reading, but it has one line change on page two, which I read.
I guess we'll vote on this by itself as an amendment. I would prefer that this wait for a work session, and that it could go back to the policy committee. When is the next, do we have a next meeting scheduled? I didn't think so.
Was there a second to the motion?
Not yet, so let's have a second to the motion for the first two changes, and let's take this one separately. So, the two first amendments that Dr. Lucas mentioned to the agenda, we have a second for that, a motion and a second, we still got another motion.
So moved.
Second?
Sorry.
I was in favor, please take the roll.
Ms. Dunbar?
I, yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. And Adam's motion, made a motion to introduce a discussion on his 5113.01 intra-district transfer, is there a second for that? There's no second, so it, the motion's lost in that regard, and the agenda's approved. And Adam, we will bring this forward, as we discussed over the telephone. I would again prefer that we have a work session.
We would make a motion to add it to the work session agenda in January.
You guys pull the agenda.
I don't think it's necessary yet, we'll just add it to the agenda.
You guys add it to the agenda and get it before the policy committee, because we don't usually see them until, we don't do even a first reading on it until the policy committees.
And there's something similar to this that Julie wanted to add, which has an interface, and I made the same suggestion to her, which she also approved, that we would wait for the January work session and discuss both of them.
I would be happy to give this policy to the policy committee if you would like.
Please. Okay. Did we vote on the agendas? Okay, thank you. Do we have a presentation this evening? Ms. Lather, the principal of Oak Creek Elementary, and teachers Tiffany Clark, Beth Phillips, Emily Walker, and Neely Ware, and students have a presentation to make for us, so if you'd please come forward.
Hello, I'm Julie Lather, and I want to say good evening to the board, and thank you for inviting us. I'm gonna let, I'll introduce the teachers and let the kids introduce themselves. This is Tiffany Clark, she's a kindergarten teacher in our building.
Ms. Lather, could you please be able to show us so we can get this recorded, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Neely Ware, who's a third grade teacher in the building, Emily Waller, who is a teacher in the Specialized Learning Center, and Beth Phillips, who is a kindergarten teacher. And who do we have here?
Jack Funk.
Peyton Lather.
Ava Clark.
Peyton Funk.
Billy Clark.
All right, and with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the teachers.
Well, I was gonna do that part as well, so thank you for doing that for me, Julie. We just are very thrilled to be here, to tell you about the wonderful things we've been doing. Heather Camacho, who is now part-time teacher, part-time diversity coordinator, actually she and I sat back a couple of years ago and talked about trying to get younger children involved in community service, being that as they get older, that becomes a very important part, and we thought there was a lot of need to be out there in the community and helping others. So, she kind of headed the whole thing, she gathered a bunch of different locations of people that we could go and help, nursing homes, the Delaware County Shelter, and so we started with a pretty small group, which actually really wasn't small, it was about 40 to 50 kiddos the first year. Second year, we ended up with about 80 kiddos, and this year, Tiffany Clark has kind of headed up a lot of everything this year, and opened it up to kindergarten through fifth, whereas before it was only third through fifth. We now have 150-plus children. So, we're doing many more events to try to include as many people as we can. We prepared a PowerPoint to show you some of the things that we've done, and the kiddos that we brought with us are gonna tell you all about those.
They always do.
Oh, we should interview you.
Purpose, volunteer service organization, open, certificate to five students, funded through parent donations for materials, approximately 150 students members, color-coded bracelets given based on hours of service, minimum of $1,000 per month, that demonstrate various ways to become involved in community, community, whole group meeting after school and outing on weekends. Events, initial meeting, introduce the purpose of Take Care Club to students, made posters for the Red Cross Blood Drive held at Oak Creek. We had Red Cross Blood Drive at Oak Creek. We made a lot of signs for it.
Making holiday cards for soldiers in Afghanistan.
Quality food boxes, Oak Creek families donated miscellaneous foods to Thanksgiving meals. Students volunteering before school to help pack boxes for families in need.
Upcoming events, passing out candy chains during the Christmas of Santa Fe during Oak Creek holiday shop, packing food boxes at the Delaware County Food Pantry, dating Christmas girls at Crow Point Town Carousing. Making boundary cookies for residents at a local nursing home, making leaf blankets for nature microphones hospital, making brownies for residents of the Ronald McDonald House, delivering to make biscuits at Huckleberry House, Columbus, and walking and playing with dogs, donating food and supplies to local infillers. This picture was drawn by Peyton Funk. I want to be in Take Care Club, because I want to do my part in helping the community. It makes me feel good to be a part of something that is great and good.
Something we do in Take Care Club, amazing cookies and brownies, they're just easy to eat. Visiting visiting families, such as giving holiday presents to soldiers, and donating blood to their class. I want to meet you in the spirit.
This picture was drawn by Jack Funk. It says, "We're holding hands because we love each other and life help and other people." Take Care Club has really made a big change in my life, because at first I thought we were just gonna talk about how to take care of the earth and stuff. When we got, when we went to all those places, it really changed me a lot. Once I saw how lucky I am, it really made me wanna be a good person, and started to think, to be way more thankful than I was. It really changed why I think, next year I'm gonna be in Take Care Club again. I really love being in Take Care Club, and it's began and grew great.
This picture was drawn by Lucy Olson, it says, "I want to be in Take Care Club because it makes me happy to help sick people." I want to take care of it.
Take Care Club has impacted me by realizing even more, what kind of animals and human beings are out there that need help. Last year at Huckleberry House, I realized that kids have problems with parents at home. They need support, and I have learned how to help even more. I have helped many people and brought joy to them. Many little things can make a big difference, despite coming to meetings, I am able to help, and it doesn't just make women happy, it makes me happy. One page and one writing.
This picture is made by Lily Tark, it says, "I like Take Care Club because I like to care." This is a picture drawn by Ava Clark. This is fourth period, it says, "I like Take Care Club because they help others and respect the world."
Take Care Club is kind, fun, caring, loving, and genuine.
And that's our presentation for you, and they all have a little treat for you to show you how much they appreciate all you do for us.
Any comments?
I am so impressed, that is so amazing, and I work with a local dog rescue group, so I would love to talk to you, we're just talking about trying to do a penny war or a food drive for all the little puppies we have.
Oh, great.
So I will.
Probably Fred of the Beard.
Probably start bugging Neely any minute, she's the one up there, I know. But, great job, kids, good job.
Well, thank you very much.
As we continue with the meeting, of course, you're welcome to go ahead and have the children leave if you would like, you will not be disturbing us. Under the board president's report of three or four items here, we will have an organizational meeting that's tentatively scheduled for January 10th next year, and in that meeting, we will establish a date for the second, our next board community dialogue, and in that regard, Ms. Truitt and Ms. Martin and I got together recently and went through the remaining questions from the first dialogue, we compiled those into themes, if you will, or like groups, and those have been sent to the board members for comment. So as each board member would look at those remaining questions, have a response, we'll gather those up, and again, it will be each board member's comments for wherever they'd like to provide an answer, and then Karen will post that on the district website, so that will be coming fairly soon. Yes, sir.
So when do you want the comments?
As soon as you can.
Okay, good.
That would be nice, please.
Good, will do.
It looked like they all had answers, though, what you said, except for one.
There were two or three.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly how many, but again, just go through them, and for something you care to respond to. At a previous board meeting, a gentleman made some comments about conflict of interest, ethics, and whistleblower policies, and I was able to remember one of them, I didn't remember the others, but I did sit down with Linda Martin, and she was kind enough, as we sat down and made a list, I thought I would provide that information on policies that in fact the district does have, and these are policies that in some cases are updates, whether they're from our discussion, including our committee, or whether they came through the NEOLA, Higher Revised Code process, these are changes that we have already memorialized. In regard to whistleblower protection, there are three policies, non-411, which is going through an update, 3211, and 4211. Regarding conflicts of interest, 0141.2, 3113, 4210, and 4113. These policies deal directly with board members, hiring relatives and employees, 1520, 3120, 4120. Policy regarding vendor and conflict adventures with the board, 6460, and also the one that I mentioned, 0120 and 1130. So hopefully that's helpful for those who wanted to follow up on that comment that was made. We will be having a report in December on the 2020 progress, as the teachers brought forward through Ms. Eddy's direction, a group to become participants in the 2020, I thought a great meeting that we had about three weeks ago, approximately, maybe four, in fact, two meetings recently, that since, over the summer months, the projects kicked up again, and some really good conversations. So we're anticipating a report then to the board in December. Are you gonna speak to the Business Advisory Committee?
I can, or you were there?
I won't mention that.
Right ahead.
That got started the other morning, great attendance, government, community, business representatives, and very pleased with the kickoff for that process.
How many people? I'm sorry, about how many people?
Approximately 20.
And there was probably only four, five that were not able to make it.
Yeah, I believe we have 25 on that committee, and yes, very well attended, and asked some very, very good questions in regard to the direction the district is going, specifically geared toward, you know, the dual enrollment option piece, and collaboration with Ohio State, Columbia State.
Would the idea be that they'd come in and report out, or are you gonna give reports on discussions, or how?
I think whatever the board is comfortable with, if you would rather that report come from a board member, I would be more than happy to report out, or, you know, our third option, I'm sure someone on that committee would be very enthusiastic toward approaching the board with a report, whatever. Would you rather we try to get somebody that represents the Business Advisory Council instead of one of us?
Yeah, I mean, we do some of that, we have people come in, I mean, that's, it's not like I have to have that, but I think it'd be interesting to hear from their perspective.
Sure, absolutely. Okay.
I would say, like we do with the other committees, have it be more topic relevant, right, so we don't have to drag them in just for an update?
Sure.
But if there's something in front of that group that we want to get their views on?
They set their agenda, or their mission statement, or?
Okay, good.
And just as a reminder for everybody, we did discuss the fact that our mission statement is about all students, and the core curriculum business where it talks about college and career readiness. So clearly this Business Advisory Committee will be dealing with that statement as well as our mission statement, education for all children. So that's my president's report. And Dr. Lucas?
Thank you.
I want music, music in the back of yours, too.
Well, first of all, welcome everyone, and everyone in the crowd, and everyone listening. It's been a while, right? And we have a, I will forewarn you, we have a long report, because it's not only a superintendent's report, but being the November meeting, this is also the time that we have the state of the schools, so you're going to hear from me, you're going to hear from Mr. Ray, you're going to hear from Mr. Marsh, and of course, you're going to hear from Ms. Jenkins, so please bear with us, we have a lot of things to share, and I will get that started with the superintendent's report. Some of the good things, the picture you are seeing, by the way, at the bottom of that screen, actually came from Orange Middle, and I want to talk a little bit about that, but before I get to that, a couple of the good things that have taken place in the district since the last time we met. We had the annual SOAR awards, that's through Batel for Kids, if you know anything about Batel for Kids, you know they're all about value-added, and how much value we add on a yearly basis to every student that steps foot in our school system that gets tested. The SOAR awards this year went to Olentange High School and Olentange Liberty High School. Those awards, by the way, are based on how far you move students from a value-added standpoint. As we all know, the higher performing districts are, sometimes the harder it is to show achievement going up, and these two high schools were fortunate enough to win the award this year, and they were honored at the recent capital conference, which I think most of you attended. What can you say about the Liberty High School soccer team, boys' soccer, they are state champs? If you got the opportunity, I got the opportunity to see them play twice, once against Upper Arlington, which was very satisfying to watch us win that one, and of course, in state semifinals down at Dayton. I believe the thing that really set Liberty apart, not only the fact they had the best talent in the state, because they're state champs, but I think it's the way they represented the school system, the community, all of us, they did it with class, they did it the right way, and of course, it's always good to win, everyone loves to win, but it's even better when you win the right way. We're very proud of this group, we're very, very proud of the coaches and the parents of these kids, so first state championship over at Liberty, and they have it rolling because they were state runner-up last year, so very good accomplishment, and we're proud of their accomplishments. Same night as the state championship in soccer, we also had a football team in the second round of playoffs, took place down at Upper Arlington, and unfortunately, we lost that night to Hilliard Davidson, but Olentange finished with a 10-2 record, 9-1 in the regular season. They did win the first home playoff game, I believe, in history, actually winning at home, we hosted one, so we're very proud of that. And last but not least, we've done this now, this Olentange Orange Middle School Living History Day, if you haven't had the opportunity, and of course, that's the Honored Veterans Day, if you haven't had the opportunity to attend this, we do a lot of things in this school district for Veterans Day, but this is one that always stands out, because we usually get approximately 60 veterans coming back, and what you see there in those pictures, if you can't make those out, would be the veterans talking to our students, very, very moving moments take place during those talks, and of course, we have real-life heroes taking place in this program every year, so another good thing taking place in Olentange. I think I mentioned this last meeting, and during my updates to you, Olentange Orange had One More Night, that's the marching band at Olentange Orange, they get together at the end of the season, and as they call it, One More Night, close to 160 band members in the high school, and then they brought out the middle school piece, that's a combination of both Berkshire and Orange Middle, with close to 200. So they are closing in on 200 band members, if you ever get an opportunity to see this, you really need to take advantage of that night. At Orange High School, teacher Terry McDermott, I don't know if you saw this on NBC4, he was featured in their anti-bullying story with the programs taking place, and his involvement in those programs at Orange High School, very good story. We had five students named winners in the Red Cross Heroes Writing Contest, we had students from all three high schools recognized for collecting food for Penn, people in need, if you have nothing to do, I believe, on the 8th of December and 9th, that's when a lot of the work for Penn is taking place at the Delaware Fairgrounds, I know I'm going to be there, I know I have someone, a student in my family, that's gonna be there that day too, and I'm sure they appreciate all the help that they could get on those days. Students from several schools, organized drives, obviously to support hurricane victims on the East Coast, that's something that we do on a continuous basis, and our service clubs work extremely hard, our kids put in tremendous number of hours in regard to service, and that's just another opportunity for us to volunteer. Some of the hot topics that we've talked about over the past year, that again, we continue to work on, our cost efficiency committee is exploring options with local townships on this shared service piece. You've heard the governor talk a lot about shared services, how can we stop duplicating things in the government agencies and get together and see how we can come together, and our cost efficiency committee is looking at options with local townships. This whole Columbus State partnership that we've talked about for over a year, when you get down to the core of the whole program, it is a shared service, whether we're sharing teachers, whether we're sharing facilities, as you know, Columbus State has talked about expanding that campus on '23, we're very much in those talks, so that is a shared service that we continue to try to build, and I might add, that's not only with Columbus State, Ohio State is part of that also, they're part of that facility and will continue to be. Last but not least, we hear talk a lot about that consolidation piece of central office, and I know that's being studied throughout the state, and who do you think they look to as far as the study goes? They look at the districts that have multiple high schools, because our central offices are already consolidated. So we will continue to provide information, whatever expertise we may have in regard to how you consolidate high schools into multiple district offices. Now, we're not talking anything here about taking away high schools, and we're part of that large district consolidation already, so we are the leaders of the parade, you might say, in regard to that shared service piece. I know that Dave talked a little bit about this piece on board members related to employees, because I believe that did come up actually several times in the past two meetings, and I know that Dave talked a little bit specifically about what policies we have, I want to get more specific into what we were really talking about, I believe the question was whether board members could vote on spouses, relatives, and I believe it was directed specifically at Julie, and she doesn't happen to be here tonight, but I do want everyone to know that we do follow up on those concerns, to my knowledge, she has never voted on any contract that involves specifically her husband's employment. Now, as you all know, as board members, sometimes you have to abstain for whatever reason for specific items, we try to catch those before you have to worry about it and pull them out on separate vote, sometimes we don't, but when it comes to specific employment contracts, I don't believe that's ever happened. She did vote on the three union and non-class. She did vote on the three union and non-classified contracts of which her husband is a member of, which is perfectly legal. We had Becky call legal counsel, and we got the ruling from the Ethics Commission, and of course, the ruling is class of employees versus individual employees. And you can vote on that class of employees as all of you did, so I wanted to make sure that we got specifically to the heart of that question. We have a lot of policies, and my experience as a superintendent, those policy books are this thick, and you can get lost in policies, but I wanted to get to the specifics of the concern and the fact that a board member can vote on a class of employees, should abstain, I say should because sometimes, being a superintendent as many years, this isn't the only board, by the way, that has people that are related to them working, should abstain, sometimes it goes through. So I don't believe it's ever done that with Julie in regard to her specific issue, so I wanted to make sure that cleared. The other thing I wanted to make sure we addressed was this whistleblower protection because that has been a big item and as it should be. And in the policy that we are looking at, I want to make sure it says in the case of reporting suspected fraud or fraudulent activity. You do have an option as the public also to check even further. All of us, all seven, I'm counting Julie, has to file with the Ethics Commission on a yearly basis. We have to. Now, what we file on that piece of paper is totally up to each individual, but we have to file. So if you really want to know what we're doing, not only here, but also out there in public, you can go to the Ethics Commission report and pull any of us, me, Becky, Dave, whomever you feel, and see where our money, where we spend our money, what money we have invested and where it is invested. And of course, that's totally up to each individual as far as how you fill that report out. So I would encourage anyone, if there is, if you do suspect something like that, we want to be extremely transparent, I would give you an additional option and say, check the Ethics Commission report in regard to those issues. This is an update on the postcard that we sent out last year, and of course, as you know, even though we have not received the official state report card, we do know what we're going to get, and we've updated this. Again, as you can see, return on investment, how do we do versus how do we spend? And again, I will show you, last year, as you recall, we were tied with Dublin at 106.9. This year, unfortunately, Upper Arlington got us by .1, they're at 107.4, we are at 107.3. I won't say where all the others are, but you can see that. And if you look at the left column, you can see what we spend per pupil. Now, again, this came up at the Business Advisory Council, by the way, because I often get challenged to run it like a business, as they say, and my question to the business leaders of the community was, if you had a company that had one of the better or almost the best product at the most efficient cost, would you invest in it? And of course, all 20 said absolutely, so I think this is a good picture form of, again, the product we produce and what we spend to produce that product in comparison to all of our competitors. So you'll probably see that postcard coming out very soon. Specific agenda items, I've already covered the policy revisions, specifically the whistleblower policy, and again, I would encourage people to use the Ethics Commission for that. We get donations every month, and once again, we are blessed, as you can see on our agenda, to be getting donated from our various supporters in the district. We do have three individuals, I believe, asking for approval on a higher education alignment grant. This goes hand in hand with that dual enrollment piece. As you recall, we wanted to get that rolled out this year. We have three individuals that are kind of helping with the alignment and how does the dual enrollment piece align with our own curriculum, and that's the approval for the three individuals that you have on your agenda. We have a resignation of Tracy Ward. Obviously, we get resignations every month, but I wanted to say a little bit about this one. She's from Liberty High School, she was the journalism instructor, she went to work for Apple. As you know, we've kind of teamed up with Treka, the research and development piece with Apple Computer, and Tracy did such a good job, unfortunately, Apple took her from us. So she is leaving, and in fact, I believe she's already in Charlotte working for Apple. You have one here that's somewhat odd, we have an accepting, an approval to accept employment and then an approval to accept a resignation. We had an individual that came to work transportation-wise for us for one day and then quit, so therefore, you don't see this very often, but you have an agenda that on one item, it's approval to employ, and then on two items down, I believe it's approval to accept the resignation. That's the reason for that, just so you understand and know that's what's taking place. Before we get into state of the schools, I would entertain any questions in regard to the superintendent's report at this time. With none, then, I'm going to move forward with state of the schools. And again, the overview and purpose of the state of the schools is to provide our community and district a brief overview of the Olentangie Local School District over the past academic year. What you will hear in this report is information regarding, number one, academic achievements. Now, you will not hear as much specific as you usually do in regard to academic achievement because we usually give our annual report on the academic progress of the district. We have a few items due to the fact of the official report card not being out, we have a few items that we do not have yet, so therefore, we're going to get that annual report that we usually get in November, we'll have that in January. So it won't, this won't take quite as long as it usually does because the other part of half hour to 45 minutes will take place in January, just so you know and understand that that report will be coming. We will also have an overview of the departments and responsibilities and activities, as we shared with the Business Advisory Council. Most business people really do not know the fact that we have a lot of people in a lot of departments, and we want to make sure that you are on board, on the same page, which I know most of you are, but also the fact that our community also knows and understands what's taking place. And last but not least, you're going to hear from Becky in regard to our district fiscal operations. Just an overview again of the report card, we've seen this, we know we're going to be rated excellent with distinction. By the way, I may throw in, House Bill 555 is probably going to pass the lame duck session, and is probably going to go to an A, B, C, D, F rating next year, not sure what it's going to look like, but that rated excellent with distinction, right now, I'm not hearing anything about A pluses, that's what excellent with distinction would convert to, so I don't know what that's going to look like next year. We do know that our performance index is 107.3, puts us in the top 6% in the state of Ohio, which again, there are 613 school districts in the state of Ohio, so you do the math, that puts us way up there. We have met 26 out of 26 performance indicators, 24 of those are academic in nature, and you also have graduation rates and attendance rates. We did demonstrate adequate yearly progress, I know we've talked about that. This kind of points to subgroups, specific subgroups, to get to the achievement gap challenge that we have in the state of Ohio and in the nation, and if you have individuals, enough individuals in your district to qualify subgroups, for example, students with disabilities, socio-economically disadvantaged, race, those would be some of the subgroups, you have to also show the same type or same trend of academic achievement that you would for your entire district. If you don't, you do not meet what's called AYP, and we did meet AYP, which means we're serving all of our students. We did exceed the growth standards, that's the value-added piece, that means that the average student that walked into Olentangie received more than a year's worth of education. Value-added is based on where you are when you enter and where you are when you exit. For example, a third grader coming in, logically speaking, should be performing at the third grade, beginning third grade level. When that person exits, they should be performing at beginning fourth grade level. As we all know throughout our school careers, some don't perform at that level, some perform higher. If you perform higher, and we can now measure that through value-added, that means that your staff is doing one heck of a job advancing people, because now when you exceed the growth standard, that means on average, your kids are getting more than one year of value-added to their education. I think that often goes by the wayside, especially for the more affluent and higher achieving districts, because it's tough to do. As we all know, when you get a child at the 98th percentile, it's hard to not only maintain him there, but also to move him a little bit further. And with this value-added growth measure, it shows that those students are doing that in the Olentangie school districts. All 22 schools were excellent or excellent with distinction, and you sit there and say, oh, wait, we have 23 schools. Well, you're right, but HIGS, as you recall, last year was an all-day kindergarten program, therefore, we didn't test them, so they did not qualify. I'm sorry, HIGS.
That's what happens when you try to back.
All right, HIGS, I'm glad, I was just checking actually to see if Dave was awake up there.
We heard this just the other morning, and I don't get tired of you.
This is a rerun for you, is it? With that said and done, I'm going to ask Mr. Ray, who is just recovering from surgery, by the way, to come forward and go over the Curriculum and Instruction Department.
Thank you, sir. Yes, I get to talk about our academic team. As you remember, last year, we reorganized into two main departments of the academic team and the operations team, so my main responsibility is to supervise the 23 building principals and 24, if you count Oasis, and then also the functions of some of the departments that are in the academic team. So I'm going to start with the Curriculum Instruction Department, and I want to just make sure, last year, when we first presented this as our structure and central office to support the operations in our buildings, there was some concern expressed, and last year was a difficult year, first year with me doing that and Mr. Fetty's first year in the operation, it was difficult, but this year is proving to be, as people gain experience, a lot more efficient and effective, and I want to compliment Jack Fetty for his leadership in the Curriculum and Instruction Department. The main functions of Curriculum and Instruction involve professional development, one of the main functions of professional development, they develop, as you see there, 153 opportunities for our staff to do the, through the Olentangie Professional Development Academy, to do that function in-house, and as you've heard in previous presentations, that saves our district considerable dollars. The department also facilitates the building's continuous improvement plans, they work with the buildings to analyze their data and find opportunities for improvement, and then we develop a district-wide plan that the buildings align to, each building is a little different and has different needs, but we say for them, we provide them the floor level, and then they take it a little further to meet their own individual needs. But we do stress continuity with the continuous improvement plans related to curriculum instruction and assessment in our buildings. There's three main projects that the Curriculum Instruction Department are working on this year. They're helping to support our transition to the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System, which is going to be a major undertaking as we implement that in 2013 and '14. As you know and have heard before, we have adopted new state curriculum standards in all of the core content areas, and as you've heard previously, we are in the process of implementing those with full implementation next year. And then in 2014 and '15, the new assessments come online, so we're doing significant research and development, professional development with our teachers on how to meet the needs of those new state tests. There was a recent article in the Dispatch that the prediction is that scores will go down by 35%, and I'm going to throw it out there right now, not here. That's right, not. So just some individual student achievements this year in academics, and as Dr. Lucas highlighted, now that we've looked at that report a couple of different times, I think we should have also highlighted for the district that we had an all-time high ACT score, mean ACT score of 24.8, and we can't stress enough that the performance index is also an all-time high. We do have, we had a significant number of students score perfect on either an Ohio graduation test or a specific OAA assessment, and we also had seven National Merit and 15 Commended Scholars, and that's based on the PSAT scores that are the pre-scholastic aptitude tests that our juniors all take. And as Dr. Lucas mentioned before, we had two of our schools earn SOAR awards from Batel for Kids. Also in the Curriculum and Instruction Department, Melanie Andres is our gifted supervisor, she does an outstanding job of supporting the needs of our gifted students and our gifted intervention specialists. We have gifted intervention specialists and one staff member in all of our elementary buildings and middle schools. We have 28 Advanced Placement Course offerings, which is a significant number. I think the total number of AP courses is 35?
Yeah.
Somewhere, 35. So we offer a full complement of advanced placement courses. And in my 10 years in the district, that number of students who are taking those courses and scoring at a score of three or higher has increased significantly. So you see there, 67.5% of our juniors and seniors took at least one AP exam, and 80.8 of them are scoring a three or higher.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
You go right ahead.
Do you know how many sophomores are taking AP class? I mean, my daughter took one as a sophomore now, but I just don't know how many kids are taking it starting in their sophomore year. I think there's two that are offered.
Typically, well, typically, the main one they can take would be Advanced Placement U.S. History and...
She took stats.
Depending on the school, roughly somewhere between 50 and 120, it varies by school. And that number has increased also. Statistics they can take, some actually have advanced in some of the sciences. I think more and more, we're of the mindset, if students are interested in taking advanced coursework, we want them to take that advanced coursework and challenge them with the most rigorous curriculum possible. So as I said, 10 years ago, we had very specific mechanisms in place, you had to have a grade and a prerequisite course, you had to have a teacher recommendation, it was really difficult to get into AP courses, and we've pretty much just stripped all those away, and the fear was that too many kids would take them and that they wouldn't score well. Well, I think we've shown here that our teachers certainly met the challenge of taking on everybody, so there you go. We are also developing the other enrichment opportunities like dual enrollment, credit flex, and our blended learning and online course offering, so again, that's a very significant project for that department. As you know, we started our Alternative Education Program, and Jen Blakely has done a tremendous job of developing that program to meet the needs of our students. We started out with two kids in 2010 and '11, and currently, there's 108 down there, and they're doing a great job. As you saw on the agenda, you're going to be approving a number of seniors who are going to graduate here early because of their involvement in Oasis, so I can't compliment Jen Blakely enough on the work she's done down there. I also get the privilege of supervising the People's Services Department, our two People's Services Directors, Mr. Chris Andres and Ms. Betsy Hudsonson. You previously heard a report for them on the activities of the People's Services Department. They go above and beyond the call of duty to facilitate maximum learning for our students with special needs. So again, it's a significant number of students, and the services they provide and the support to the families is tremendous. We also have two school community liaisons who do an outstanding job of interfacing with all the community support agencies and getting resources in place to help our students in need. People's Services also supervises seven nurses we have in our district and the 23 clinic aides. We made a significant change a few years ago, we used to staff almost every building when they registered with a nurse, and we made a significant staffing change years ago to remove the nurses or have the nurses do more of supervisory role and replace them with clinic aides, but when we decided, when we hired clinic aides, rather than just hiring a layperson... But when we decided, when we hired clinic aides, rather than just hiring a layperson, we made sure we were hiring a registered nurse or an LPN to be the clinic aide. And we have a significant number of people in the community that are very attracted to that type of job. And then the last thing I get the privilege to supervise is our new Student Welcome Center. And again, they do all the enrollment, student demographic changes, and then support our kindergarten registrations in the building every year. Tremendous job. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Rafe, by the way?
Any questions or comment? I want to mention that the other morning, or evening, I attended the Education Service Center's report and conference on the continuation of the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System. And what is it, four districts, if I remember correctly, are involved with the service center?
Yes.
And Becky and Wade and Ms. Eddy were in attendance. And as I understand it, Elaine has been a very important part of that evaluation process. So thank you for that, Elaine, for taking the time to be involved there.
Yes.
Other questions on academic piece? Thank you, Mr. Rafe. Well done. I was going to ask Karen to come up and talk about the Communications Department, but since she is the department, I figured that I would do the talking.
Thanks.
Because I could talk about her, and I know she didn't want to talk about herself. So therefore, our Communications Department, and Karen and Linda Mead, by the way, I mean Linda, if she's not here, she was here, helps in that department also. It maintains the website, it maintains the district building and listservs, it posts district information on social media sites, develops and distributes community newsletters. It does all the things that most business communications departments do. Now, I'll again, take you back to that run it like a business. This is one of those pieces where usually, a business would never think of getting, losing a communication slash marketing piece, otherwise, they would go out of business quickly. Oftentimes, when school districts get into money problems, oftentimes, it's the Communications Department that you'll hear from in the community going, do you really need that? And again, it's run it like a business, do you really need that? And the answer is absolutely, we need that because we serve 17,500 students. And of course, here, definitely here, when you talk about that media relations, as you know, we have 4, 6, 10, all the radios, the Dispatch, the Gazette, you name it, we have it in regard to the media. And they want to know what's happening in Olentangie, specifically, what's happening in Olentangie. So that individual, Karen, has a lot of things to do in regard to media relations because those calls come every day. She also supports district community activities and organizations. Some of those newsletters you see going out to building level, obviously, they go through Karen at times to model those and develop those newsletters. So she does a great job with that, and we do appreciate, by the way, she used to be at GM before. I don't know if you knew that or not, but we are extremely lucky to have someone with her talent, not to mention the fact she went Northwestern. They're good in writing, but as far as football and Ohio State goes, they're... Right, Karen?
I'm too busy moshing.
Yeah, absolutely. We also have superintendent committees. As you know, you have five board committees. I have 16 superintendent committees, and there they are as you go down through. What I want to say about these committees is the fact that we have a lot of people in central office that does a heck of a lot of work with these superintendent committees. They get their, I guess, their internship, if you should say, in regard to being superintendents down the road. This is a big part of that. Each one of them has some assignment on those superintendent committees in regard to running them, kind of guiding them and leading them through specific projects and subjects. So very proud of the job that our individuals in central office continues to do with these superintendent committees. We have a human resource department, and you'll hear from Mr. Marsh here in just a little bit, but obviously, that department, like any HR department, supports the administrative certified classified staff on all aspects of employment, does a lot of the work on the negotiated agreements with all three employee associations. And as you know, we just went through that. And I can't say enough about the job that Mr. Marsh did in regard to that because what most people don't understand in today's world, negotiations, most of that work, a lot of that work is done leading up to those negotiations, a lot of that planning. You were part of that strategic planning. We went through probably a year's worth before we really got to the negotiation piece. I think that's a big, big piece that most people don't realize because a lot of businesses anymore don't negotiate contracts. Number of classified staff members, 667. Number of certified staff members, 1,108. Number of administrators, 70. Number of applications we receive annually, 1,646, and the certified in, 358, about 2,000. Then we start all over. So most times, there's around 4,000 applications down there, but 2,000 of them are cycled in new every year. So you have to get rid of and keep doing, and we continue to have our job fairs because we do continue to grow. I might add, by the way, from today to last year at this time, we have grown about 756 students. So we are continuing to grow. We also have a technology department. They do what most ITs do and support the instructional operational functions of technology for students, staff, and parents, maintains and administers 20,000, over 20,000 computers, 684 bring-your-own-device access points, and we have over 3,500 of those. You know the Myola and Tangi, the Power School and the School of GP's of our website that they have helped maintain. And of course, they're also involved in innovation grants, 3D printers, DNA tester, so on so forth. Questions on our departments? I'll bring Mr. Marsh up to talk a little bit about our operations.
I imagine we have a good warranty on our computers, 20,000?
Yes, we better have anyway.
I know. There you are, sir. Okay. Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to talk about the operations side of Olentangie schools. As Mr. Rafe mentioned, we reorganized central office a little over a year ago. In addition to some human resource responsibilities, I inherited some operations responsibilities and have a lot of folks that do a really good job, so we'll make that an easy transition. First, the Business and Management and Facilities Department, Jeff Gordon. Again, say thank you, he has a great job. He also has taken on some additional responsibilities. But really, the main function there is to plan and coordinate and make sure all of our facilities are maintained, the proper maintenance is happening on our facilities and grounds. As far as some statistics on that department, custodial staffing, 96 custodians, 31 maintenance employees. That custodial number has dropped over the last several years, again, in the face of continuing growth and continuing to add school buildings, the number of custodians that we have has decreased as we've changed our staffing patterns and found ways to be more efficient. Facilities, 24 educational facilities, five support buildings, and about 3 million square feet. A little bit of information on the number of grounds that we maintain and support, the biggest of which are the three high school complexes and the five middle school complexes that have multiple fields and athletic events to plan and maintain. And one last note that Mr. Gordon was instrumental in putting in place for the second year this year during the summer, when school is out, for a lot of the custodial folks, we operate a four-day, and for some of the folks here in central office, a four-day summer work week, which saves us energy costs on running the air conditioning and other facilities during the summer. Food service, again, I don't think you're going to find a better food service director or manager than Pam Riley. She has an enormous amount of experience and does just a fantastic job and runs her department efficiently in the black every year, providing meals to both our students and our staff, administering the national school lunch and breakfast programs appropriately. Again, some statistics on last year, how many lunches and breakfasts that are served, and you can see quite a few. And then just some information on the number of students that purchase meals on a daily basis. 60% of our students purchase a meal on a daily basis, and 80% of students purchase either a meal or all out-of-card item. Transportation, inheriting the operations side of the district last year, the supervision for that, that's probably where the biggest chunk of learning and new time for me. And Jody Clark was our supervisor, did a great job. Bob Thompson jumped in and helped us for a year, did an outstanding job of, again, looking at that department, making sure it's running efficiently. And Jody's continued to look at ways of making that a more efficient department, does a good job. But ultimately, the job of that department is to get our students to and from school safe every day, and they do a fantastic job of that. Some just statistics, we have 157 buses that are housed in two bus compounds, currently 147 different routes, 148 drivers, 13 substitutes, and that is a challenge. And you've seen that couple of articles in the Dispatch of various districts in central Ohio, struggling to maintain their number of bus drivers, having to find ways to cover routes, and in many cases, routes not being covered. We're no different. We're always looking for good substitutes and good bus drivers, but we've done a really good job of making sure that we have enough drivers on a daily basis to get our routes covered. We also have eight support staff that support the transportation department at either one of the compounds, and we have six mechanics that keep our buses safe and on the roads. Overall operations, some things that, the operations side of the district that you may not be aware of or aren't in the forefront a lot, we do have, we work with three school resource officers. One is sort of housed out of each high school to make sure that we have a resource on-site to help keep our kids safe and respond if we need to. And they do a lot of training for our students and our staff as well. So we're thankful for that relationship with the Delaware County Sheriff's Department and our resource officers. We do have, as Mark mentioned, two community school liaisons that work with students and families for students that may need some additional support with community resources, and they do a great job, and we're fortunate to have them working with our kids and our administrators. We make sure that we offer, of course, methods for reporting confidential concerns through our school resource officers, through our community liaisons. And as I mentioned before, they provide training for staff and for students on safety and violence prevention, that's for our staff, and asset development also, training on a regular basis. And of course, the school resource officers organize our K9 search operations at the high school and middle school. Any questions from the operations side, HR side of the district?
Safe, the best for last. So we'll do our fiscal overview, because I know you have not heard enough of that lately. And I'm not doing something right on this.
The right arrow.
I did.
Keith might need to help you there.
I think Mr. Marsh broke it. Okay, well, I think I've talked enough. You already know it anyway. He just did it.
Oh, he did.
So basically, our revenue from May to October is much better. Our balance is improved by 13.7 million. It was fiscal 15, fiscal 16 is better by 16.5 million. Of course, you know that from May to October, we settled, evolved three of our unions and made some changes, significant changes, which helped that. The important piece to that is that we think, unless the state, of course, does something bad with our foundation, that we'll probably be able to stay off the ballot for at least four years. So that is very good news. We do expect to see some new budget from the governor in January. I have not heard anything, seen any details about that. And of course, that'll then have to work through the legislative process so that we know what happens, and that will be worked into the five-year forecast. I do not expect to get any additional dollars from the state. However, we'd be really happy if they just leave us alone. We do expect to see the small amount of casino revenue. I believe I spoke to you all about that. I think in January, we'll see about $350,000. What we do not know is what the state funding formula will do. Will that take money away from us going forward? Obviously, if it does not, we will work the estimates into the five-year forecast if it does. Revenue, you can see that we are definitely locally funded. We get about 5% of our monies from the state in the way of foundation formula funding. So that's one of the main reasons, not the only reason, but we definitely want to listen to our taxpayers because they are footing the bill. Our expenditures, we don't have fiscal 12 expenditure per pupil yet, but when you look at our 910 cost per pupil compared to the 1011 expenditure per pupil, that was lower, which is not typical in a district, especially growing as quickly as we are. The biggest piece to that, aside from some of the changes that we made in personnel, were student teacher ratio. If you remember seeing the one slide, I don't think it's in this presentation, but that pupil teacher ratio is steadily increasing. Keep in mind, that 15.42 to 1 does not mean there are 15 students in a class. That includes the extras, librarians, gym, et cetera, phys ed, et cetera. Expenditures, we are a service industry, so we do spend about 85% of our budget on personnel and benefits. That's not changed, that's remaining the same. But we did make some great strides when we negotiated this year. So great working relationship with all three of our unions, as well as our non-union folks. Oh, it is in here. This shows the steady increase that we are expecting, that we've seen and we are expecting in the future years to our pupil teacher ratio. And as you know, as that number creeps up, those are dollars saved or expected expenditures saved. Dr. Lucas would be happy to take any of your questions.
I might close this State of the Schools with the fact that, to remind you that we do have that annual report on academic achievement. But I think in the conversation that I had with both Dave and Kevin and our DLT, which would be the real inner core of the organization, I don't believe I've ever felt better. Believe it or not, January's four years. I cannot believe that. This January is really when I started down here, even though it was just transition days. But once you're in transition, you've actually started and you've left your other district. And we had a tremendous amount of work ahead of us. When people told me here, you don't understand Olentangie till you get here, I was like everyone else going, oh, yeah, that's exactly right. You do not, because of the tremendous growth, just tremendous growth. And if you look at the history, we've had so many people do so many great things in this school district, but I've never felt better about this school district than what I do today in regard to the finances, in regard to having people in the inner circle, as you may say, that actually challenges each other. You give us a tremendous challenge as a board from saying, we need you to do this, this, and this. And I can totally appreciate that leadership style. You don't tell us how to do it, you say, this is what we need done. And it allows us to go into the strategic planning stage and really push on each other. So I can't say enough about the work that's done. We're doing it with less people. We're doing it better than we've ever done it. And plain and simple, when people say, what do you want out of Olentangie? I have a simple answer. We want to be the best at whatever it is we're doing. I don't care if it's academics, I don't care if it's the band, I don't care if it's football, I don't care if it's the school play. I want to be the best. We're not there, and we will continue to work to get there, but we're getting close, and we're getting closer every day. And I can't say enough about the staff that we have in this school district. We're very fortunate in the fact that we get the pick of the litter, as they say, and believe me, they produce. You can see it on the report card. That's where the work gets done. We also have great support for parents that place high expectations on their kids and on the school system. And we have just great, great people in central office that I don't ever get to say enough about them, but they just go out there and work hard every day, and they have to put up with me. And sometimes, it's like, isn't it ever good enough? And good enough, as they say, I used to tell my kids, if you can't be first, don't be last, you better be close. And we're closing in, and we continue to close in. With that, I'm very, very proud of the work that a lot of people in this district has done. With that said, I will entertain any questions.
Let me just ask there, that comment you just made there, is that similar to your concept of in track, state of the lab, then get back as fast as you can?
Now, I was a track coach.
Comments, questions?
Which month was the casino money supposed to come in?
January.
Let me tag on to what you just said. Let me tag on to what you just said about the staff of this district. And for instance, so what, three weeks ago at Liberty Middle School, there was a drug information meeting for parents, extremely well done. The BAC meeting, where staff attends that. All those board and superintendent committees that you mentioned, where staff members are heavily involved in that. When any of us attend any of these meetings, it becomes so apparent how involved our staff at all levels are involved in this district. It is not an eight-to-five job. The commitment of Olentangie, there's a number of reasons why we excel with distinction, and of course, we all know those reasons, but that is certainly an important part of it, is the commitment our staff makes to the district.
Yes.
And then speaking to business advisory committee, let me also add, a woman, a member of the committee, came up to me after the meeting and said, "They moved to Olentangie", it was a year ago, because of Olentangie schools into the area. And she said that the district has exceeded her expectations. She knew it was an excellent district, and it's exceeded her expectations. Last comment I'll make is, for those of us who know, the Ohio University marching band's signature song is "Long Train Running."
Yes, it is.
And I got to attend the "One More Night," and it was a great concert. I really enjoyed that. And thank you, Mr. Zarelli, but he played, the band played "The Long Train Running" twice, and that made it even better.
That's right. The Ohio University.
The Ohio University, yes, correct. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Becky was very nice to make an important reminder for me before she begins her report. Many of you may know, the district lost a very important member of our community with the passing of Judy Muntin. She's secretary at Heights Middle School. She passed away unexpectedly just before Thanksgiving. And let me just add to that, two important members of our community, staff, teachers, lost parents just before the Thanksgiving holidays. So would you please, I'm going to stand, and if you would join with me, the moment of silence. And Ms. Jenkins, if you would please.
Sure. Just to let the board know that I'll probably be bringing a resolution to you next month. We have a possible refunding issue again that could save us some dollars. So I'll let you know that. We're just going to put the resolution in place in case the market comes, it gets to the point where we definitely can pull the trigger on those. And it should be a substantial dollar amount that we can refund. Our audit is wrapped.
Could we see that before it gets executed?
See the resolution?
No, the analysis.
Oh, yeah.
That would support moving forward with the refunding.
Certainly. But we're not going to move forward before you pass the resolution. I'll send it. I'll send what I have, yes. The thing that's holding it back right now is that there's a little too much negative arbitrage, and I can go into more detail with you if you'd like to know more about that.
Good.
But once that turns around, there's a significant savings that we could reap. Our audit is wrapping up. We should have a report hopefully in the next week or two, and thankfully, this year we did not have any issues. And I wanted to just point out that the appropriation resolution that you see before you tonight has a $22 million entries in it for the bond refunding, and that's not issuing any authority for any additional or new monies to be spent, but because of the way we have to book the refunding, we have to increase the appropriation. So that's really all that is, and that's all I have.
Comments, questions?
There's a line item on ten of tenants for Hurricane Katrina donations, and it's been sitting there for a while. I think we should, why don't we move that over to pay for student fees for elementary school kids?
We can't just do that, that's a restricted fund. I'll have to look at what you're looking at, but I believe that was one of the student activities, and so it has to go along with their purpose and budget statement. So that was monies that was, they went out and fundraised for that and didn't get it sent in. So they can, they probably donate it to the Red Cross or something, but they can't donate it for student, for student fees.
Okay. Just let me know, and it'll be one last line item.
Sure.
Take a report.
You're welcome.
Questions, other comments?
Oh, sorry. Could we get, are we entering the enrollment period now for the new benefit program?
Yes.
Could we get an update on that?
We have, tomorrow is the last day for folks to turn in their forms. We have, at this point, 148 people who have taken the high deductible plan. Most of those are single, but we still have about 400 forms outstanding, so we should know tomorrow where we're at with that.
All right. That'll be great.
Thank you. And Becky, do we have public participation comments or general comments? Thank you. Would you please provide the protocol?
We have 30 minutes for public participation, number one. Each participant is given five minutes to speak. Please, when you come to the podium, give your name and address. Thank you.
Mr. Solomon, Carl Solomon, please.
Before I, just have a few comments. I do want to address something that Dr. Lucas mentioned regarding the vote that was cast by Julie. I like Julie personally, but I think that the standard ought to be, the bar ought to be a little bit higher when it comes to voting on a collective bargaining agreement that affects a family member. And I'm not suggesting there's anything illegal or any impropriety. I just think that in the interests of appearance and the interests of professionalism, we ought, as board members, I would suggest that she abstain in the future from voting. I think that was inappropriate for her to vote in that matter, whether or not it violates, you know, state law or anything promulgated by the Ethics Commission. Recently, we read an editorial in the Columbus Dispatch which referenced the Olentangie School District and took issue with the district's policy of requiring school board members to go through the superintendent to get permission from the superintendent to speak with an administrator or other employee of the school district. As the editorial pointed out, individual board members, in order to perform their oversight and policy-setting role, should be free to seek out firsthand knowledge of how their district is performing. The editorial went on to conclude that if board members are to perform their duty of overseeing the schools in the best interests of students, parents, and taxpayers, they need unfettered access to schools and administrators. Mr. King, in a response to this editorial on October 27th, said he and his fellow board members, Faisal Dunbar and O'Brien, agreed that board members should be free to seek out firsthand knowledge of how the district is performing, and said that we strongly believe the renewal of this policy continues to allow the school board to do just that. I submit respectfully that nothing could be further from the truth. In the interests of transparency, which should be paramount importance in school districts as public entities, there should be no filter and no censoring of the free flow of information between district managers, administrators, and Board of Education members. The policy enacted by the Board of Education stifles and has a chilling effect upon the free flow of information. More importantly, it diminishes the chances of identifying and promptly addressing issues of illegal conduct, ethical violations, and conflict of interest. What is this board afraid of? What behavior is this Board of Education trying to suppress? I'm not suggesting any improprieties, but what if the issue, which a district employee wants to bring to the attention of a board member, involves some illegal or improper conduct by the superintendent? What if the district employee or administrator is afraid or discouraged from coming forward because they know they will have to go through the superintendent? I submit your policy institutionalizes a chilling effect and runs contrary to what other public entities do and the channels of communication public corporations are required to maintain. Why should we expect anything less from a public school system? Lastly, I found the personal attack on fellow board member White contained in Mr. King's public letter to the dispatch unprofessional and unbecoming of someone who is president of our school board. To infer there is some inconsistency between Mr. White's interest in overseeing the use of taxpayer money to whether or not he asked questions at the first reading of a five-year forecast seems to me pretty petty, defensive, and snarky. First of all, this was a first reading of the five-year financial forecast. Secondly, as I recall, there were very few questions asked about the forecast at the October 9th board meeting, certainly not of any substance. I also recall one other board member who asked no questions, but Mr. King chose to single out Mr. White for not having asked a single question.
You have one minute.
I do understand Mr. White conversed with the treasurer, Ms. Jenkins, at length about the five-year forecast prior to the October 9th Board of Education meeting. The fact of the matter is, Mr. King, that whether you agree with your colleague on the board or not, he was probably, he has probably asked more questions about matters coming before this board at public meetings than anyone else, including yourself. It's high time you started treating your fellow board member with some respect rather than unfounded criticism. Whether you agree or disagree with Mr. White, he was elected by the voters and the taxpayers of our school district. And frankly, Adam White has demonstrated a lot more attention to the financial well-being and fiscal responsibility of this school district than you or any other member of this Board of Education.
Thank you, sir. And Ms., oh, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if Kirby is male or female, but Nielsen, Kirby Nielsen? Thank you, sir.
Kirby Nielsen, 7408 Falls View Circle, Delaware, Ohio. And as has happened many times before, people who've spoken before me more or less said the same things that I would want to say, I kind of concur in substance and the matters that Carl just spoke to. I think the letter was probably, could have been better not sent. Sometimes it's best not to say anything. This probably was a case where it was just best to let the dispatch article go. It was an editorial on the, I believe it was on the 11th of October. It was their opinion. They had been investigating another school system. They brought Olentangie into it. I don't know that necessarily a response was in order, just better let it go. I think the only new thing I would add, or the new comment I would add to Mr. Solomon's points would be, have this school system ever considered an ombudsman? I think there is a role for a person who can absorb the questions, the problems, the issues that are brought forth by the parents, by school board members, by the staff, put these all together and get their, get resolutions sent in the right direction. And that doesn't always, and shouldn't always be through Dr. Lucas's office. It might be through other sources. So if parents have concerns, questions, maybe they don't need to go to Dr. Lucas for that. Maybe there's another way that it can be handled, and people would be satisfied. I would consider an ombudsman if I were in your position. You've got a big school system, you're a big organization, a lot of organizations have this type of a person, and I would start, if I were you, looking in that, might be an answer.
Thank you, sir.
I would make one clarification comment in regard to, most concerns do not get to my office, and some that do, the proper channel is to send the concern back to either at the classroom level, building principal level. I think the main objective that we have is to solve problems. And even though I would love to be able to say, "I know all, see all, and can hear all that's taking place in a 17,000-student district," I know that's not even close to being the case, nor can anyone in the crowd do the same. And what we try to do, as soon as we get a concern, is get it back to the level at which it will get solved. And some do go back and come back up the chain, whether at the classroom level, it may go to the building principal level, it comes to central office, it may go to Mr. Marsh in operations, it may go to Ms. Jenkins in finance, it may go to Mr. Rafe in academics, and then eventually, if it gets to me, as they say, it's usually a pretty complex problem. So that's one clarification I would like to make in the fact of how problems are solved. Secondly, I will again address the first speaker's issue in regard to this whole process. There's an obligation of a school board to be the final say of an appeals process, and if we're all out there just making calls to anybody, it can damage that entire appeals process, whether that has to do with student suspension, student expulsion, employee discipline. There's a lot to do with that. And if you decide to make that call, that's obviously your option, and I believe I have a very good relationship with everyone on this board. You get constant communications, but I would again really want you to think about that whole piece, because ultimately, even though I don't believe any of you have sat in an expulsion appeal, ultimately, if it goes from me, you are then the decision-maker. And if you've made those phone calls, or if it's an employee discipline process, we lose. Plain and simple. Now, all that other stuff sounds really nice, bottom line is, we lose and we have responsibilities. So I would encourage you to think about that this whole time. I would also encourage you to call me at any time, as I always do. I send out emails, I make phone calls, whatever that may be, and for the most part, most of you get back to me with any concern you may have.
Thank you, sir. We have three discussion items this evening, and the first is Ms. Jennifer Clark, who is the senior donor recruitment representative from the American Red Cross. She'll be speaking about the partnership with Olentangie Schools. So Jennifer, would please join us?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to share the successes of the Olentangie Local School District with you, who lead the district. I've had this discussion with several other donor recruitment representatives in the central Ohio region, as well as nationally. Olentangie Local Schools and the American Red Cross have had a very longstanding relationship. Let's see if I can make this work. Aha! Just to put a few things into perspective for you, here in central Ohio, we need 650 donors every single day to support 39 area hospitals. There's been a few new contracts that have been signed, and we actually have 42 area hospitals that we support. Our goal is to maintain a three-to-five-day supply of all eight blood types, and a three-day supply meets routine demands but may not adequately prepare for emergencies. Occasionally, we'll have a trauma situation. We just had a surgery this summer that required over 800 pints of blood be utilized. Our Blood Services Region encapsulates 27 counties, so basically, we go from Marion to Marietta, 42 hospitals. Olentangie Local Schools is a leader among all of the school districts in the 27-county region. During, my numbers go back to 2009, that's when I began to manage the entire district. We, during that first year, we had two elementary schools that held blood drives that produced 71 total units. This past year, we, nearly all elementary schools held blood drives, and, or seven elementary schools held blood drives, producing 655 total units of blood. This next school year, nearly every single elementary school is holding a blood drive, and we are expecting about 900 units of blood to be collected. The reason we hold blood drives in elementary schools and middle schools is not to collect blood from our youth, they're just too little, they don't have enough to share. However, this is part of fulfilling your mission too, to maximize the learning experience for every child. There's so many ways that we can give. Almost every single school has a club, like the Take Care Club. There are many service clubs, students who are giving of their time, and their teachers as well, to be able to support our community. One very important way to support our community and to support each other is by giving blood. This is something that money can't buy. We can't find it between the Band-Aids and the Neosporin. This is a gift that we give to one another. Our elementary school teachers, our principals have been excellent with partnering with the Red Cross to allow us to educate the students about how important it is to give. The students then come to their parents. Most of us are Gen Xers. My primary focus is getting through the day, and let's do dinner one more time, and we're going to get up and go to work again, and you're going to school. We don't have a whole lot of extra time on our hands, so blood donation is oftentimes not top on the list of priorities. However, once our students are educated and motivated, they they recruit our, recruit parents to donate. It's something a lot of us did in high school and in college. We just don't take the time to do anymore. However, it becomes a community activity within the school. The blood donors of tomorrow are influencing and inspiring the blood donors of today. Our Olentangy Middle Schools are also active participants in this program. The first year that is with Olentangy, two middle schools provided 53 pints of blood. In this school year, we're expecting about 110 pints. Just so you know, a pint is about what fits inside of a Coke can. And a, every single pint of blood that we collect can actually help save up to three lives. The middle school and elementary school blood drives have seen a tremendous increase in participation in this past year. And I credit that mostly to Erin Boudick, who's this year's Teacher of the Year for the Olentangy District. There was a student at Liberty Tree Elementary who had a cancer diagnosis. And over the course of about a year, she had six months of chemotherapy. She had a stem cell transplant, she had antibody therapy, she had a kidney removed, and she used 52 pints of blood. And Erin really helped motivate parents to be able to support this little girl so that she could continue to receive this treatment. And Madeline, the little girl, is with us today. And she is in remission right now. And I'm sure that it is in part due to anonymous blood donors who helped her make her way through. Olentangy High Schools are absolutely outstanding. The first school year, we had 249 donated pints. In this past school year, we've had 462 pints and 439 pints this past year. We do offer a Drive to Serve Scholarship, which two of your three high schools are participating in. To earn the scholarship, you do need to have three blood drives that collect over 50 units. If you have four drives that collect over 50 units, a student gets a $750 scholarship. So Dr. Lucas talks about, you know, whatever you do, let's be the best at it. You are hands down the best. I pulled numbers from Columbus, or in this area, your neighbors. It's not a number-to-number comparison for Columbus Public Schools. We don't nearly have the participation that we have here. And of course, some of the smaller school districts out toward Lancaster and what have you. In this past three years I've been with the district, we've more than doubled the collections that we've been able to collect here. Over the past three years, we've collected over 2,500 pints of blood. In this past year, it's absolutely amazing to see that we collected 1,374 pints of blood. That's over a day and a half of central Ohio's blood supply came from Olentangy families. So thank you very much, and congratulations on your honors. And I hope to continue the relationship.
Questions or comments?
Can I ask a technical question?
Yes.
I donate all the time, but is for age-wise, is it 16 or 18?
For, there you go.
Kids.
Thank you. Thank you. 16-year-olds are eligible to donate with parental consent over the age of 17. You do not need parental consent. There are certain height and weight requirements, just to make sure that it's suitable for the donor.
It's 100 pounds, about 110.
110 pounds. But for high school students, if the shorter you are, the more you have to weigh. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Ralph Haw and Ms. Tracy Healy from DeYoung Healy, Ralph from the Development Committee, of course, are going to give us our annual enrollment projections report. So thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having us. Ralph said ladies first, so I'm going to go first and talk a little bit about the district-wide projection, which these are all familiar with. Yeah, so I don't block the microphone. This year, we did our normal comparison to what was projected last year versus what our actual enrollment was this year. I'm happy to report it was again within less than 1% of our actual enrollment. So we continue to be on track in terms of how our projections track with our actual enrollments. There was a discrepancy in our pre-K enrollment, where we had continued to project an increase in pre-K, where actually we saw a slight decline in pre-K this year. And then also within our kindergarten enrollment, where we saw a deep decrease of about 100 students from last year, which was really the first time we'd ever seen anything like that. Obviously, there have been some changes with programs in the district that we think may count for some of that loss. But again, there were, those were the two areas where we saw higher-than-expected differences previously. But again, we still continue to see the increase. As Dr. Lucas mentioned earlier, it's, you know, over 700 students that we've seen from last year to this year. The previous year, we had seen an increase of about 870 students. So the increase was a little bit down this year. But, you know, certainly, we're still growing, so we have that going. We've also been looking at birth counts. As you know, call the last couple of years, we've included birth counts in the report and in our methodology for the enrollment projections. And I just wanted to point out, in 2006 was the high, the peak year for the number of births within the district, at 1,140 births. And since then, it's been hovering right around 1,000 births up until 2011, which is at 941. So we're seeing a little bit of decline there, which will then impact our enrollment in 16, 17. Actually assume a five-year, five-year window from birth to when they show up in kindergarten. On the building front, we, last year, we saw building permits over 400 for the first time since 2006, or 2007. The total number of building permits in the district for, for single family were 468. And this year, it seems to be that we'll be on track again to hit that number, maybe even a little bit higher depending, you know, if December continues to treat us the way it's expected. It's like we'll, we'll be well in the way. One thing that we want to incorporate, we took a quick look at this year, and we'll start to include in the tracking for next year, is looking at multifamily units as well. We had done that several years ago, had realized that that hadn't really had a huge impact on what we were doing as we were moving through the building. But as we're starting to see some developments in the area and come online, we want to make sure that we have that adequately accounted for as we move forward. So we want to make sure that that's included. Because of the methodology, or because the projections were very well in line with this year's actual enrollment, we didn't make any changes to the methodology except for at the pre-K level. And what we did this year is we looked at, over the last three years, the average of the preschool enrollment has been about 25% of the kindergarten enrollment. So instead of just adding what we had done previously, which was what we had seen was about 34 students a year, that was adding to the pre-K until this year, and then it declined. So instead, we took the approach that we would say 25% of our kindergarten projection would, we would see as a pre-K projected number. So that is the only change that we made in terms of the methodology for the district-wide projection from last year.
So in terms of methodology, while, while I agree that the near-term projections were fairly close, the outer years have changed significantly over the past three years. I think when I first started, we're projecting a topping out of about 25,000 students.
Right.
And now it's closer to 21. Should we be as comfortable with that variance as we are with the near-term? Because frankly, you should be close on the 12-month projection. And I'm concerned about the variability in the out-years.
Yes, and yeah, that is a great question. And as what we've seen is, within that kindergarten enrollment, as we look at the out-years, that class has the greatest amount of impact because they're going to be in the system the longest and as we move up over that 10-year period of time. So as that kindergarten enrollment has been lower than what we've projected in the past, that's had the most impact as, as we move through. So again, that's, you know, as we try to get a handle on what that kindergarten enrollment is. And I think with incorporating the births as we've done, I think that'll help get that number a little bit more accurate. And then we won't see as much of a shift in the term.
All right. The report didn't say that there's a big boost usually from kindergarten to first grade because the parents put their kids in private, daycare, private school.
And yeah, and we've continued to see, see that. And it's about 13%, from 13, 14% of the kindergarten to first grade pickup. And so what we have is, as Mr. Lawrence said, an out-year projection of just over 2,100 students. Last year, we had projected for that, for the, if we look at the 2021, 22 school years, since that was the 10th year last year, the difference is about 1,300 students. So, so it is, as you pointed out, it's, it's lower than what we've seen. In terms of where it's the most different, the first one is obviously with pre-K. When we were just adding, you know, 34 students a year, obviously, our pre-K number was getting quite high in the out-years. So versus a 600 pre-K enrollment, we have an enrollment of 323. So that's kind of the big, big chunk of it.
Tracy, what do you see as potentially why? I know we've had this report, and our big concern was when preschool gets to 600, why, why is it flattened?
Well, what we did is, instead of just add, what we, what we did previously was we took the average increase that we had seen in pre-K and just applied that forward. So we were adding 34 students a year, which I don't think any of us felt comfortable with because it did get to that quite high level. But in absence of any, you know, in another methodology, we, we use that.
And Dr. Lucas, did we report last year that we were uncomfortable with preschool?
Yes, I recall it.
And we said we're going to revisit the model this year. So, so we're feeling a lot better.
We're much more comfortable with this, yes.
Yes.
Last year, we weren't at all comfortable with the number.
Okay. And now that we had better historical information for pre-K, we were able to actually look at what the average had been and use that. That was really the key piece. The other piece again is looking at where we've seen the decline in kindergarten of that, as again, that moves out, the, the other big difference was in the elementary level. And that was about 600 students, about 100 students per grade. Middle school and high school projections are roughly the same as what they were last year to this year. So with that, that's kind of where we stand so far district-wide. Before I turn it over to Ralph too, I want to mention another piece. While I said we didn't really change the methodology on the district-wide projections this year, with the exception of pre-K. We did, for the first time, take a look at the projections by school and using a methodology similar to what we use here with the district-wide, the core board projection methodology. So we wanted to get a better handle on how that impacts each of the schools at the school level. So Ralph's going to talk a little bit more about those and how that influences his report.
Right, and if you look at my report, you know why that becomes so critical. So, oh, we really want to focus in on that. A couple of things, just off of the way.
I'm right, I'm right.
Okay. So, the other things, we had to make sure of the model, the sensitivity of models. If you look at the key indicator is the births to kindergarten. That's a really critical number. And as Tracy mentioned, births have been reasonably flat in the school district. But so the question becomes, well, what's that ratio between births and kindergarten that's really impacted by the housing building permits? How much new housing are we getting? So there's the risk of the model. If we see a housing spike again, if we see those building permits start to go up, we probably will need to adjust that birth to kindergarten ratio.
Right.
So that there's that kind of risk in the model. The other thing that we looked at is that, I think it's been asked before, is are we going to see the age of the, as the existing subdivisions age, are we going to see a decline in enrollment coming from those subdivisions? And we've been asking ourselves that question for as long as we've been doing this report. So finally, a little light went on this year and said, oh, we think we can kind of figure out how to do that. So we've made a start on that. So Tracy's providing to the district a report by grade by subdivision. So you can look at a subdivision and say, how many high schools are coming from there? How many middle schoolers are coming from there? How many elementary schools are coming there? So he said, aha, if we look at the yield by subdivision by grade, it's effectively a 13-year snapshot of enrollments coming from that subdivision. So he said, okay, well, let's look at a couple of our benchmark subdivisions, Olentangy Ridge, Green Meadows, Green Meadows, High Meadows. And they haven't changed. The interesting one, the high school yield is about the same as the middle school, about the same as elementary. And he said, okay, well, let's look at another older district, different housing prices. And I think we chose Rocklawn or, I can't remember what we looked at. And what we saw was that indeed the yield at the lower grades was less than the yield at the higher grades, which would say, hey, maybe we do see an aging and reduction of student population coming from the, coming from the subdivisions. So we've asked, so that was just an aha, maybe there's something there, but we still haven't been able to drill down on it. What we want to do is build, is collect more data. And so we correlate that with the age of the subdivision and the mean price or median price of the house in the subdivision. But that's work to be done. We don't have that, but there's just kind of a aha, maybe there's something there.
How about the sale of the house, the turnover of the houses in the neighborhood also, I imagine?
Right, right.
But they're not moving and the kids are getting older.
Exactly. And so that's what that indicator, Green Meadows, High Meadows, is that if the, you know, because those have been around for 25 years or so. So certainly, they've turned over. So if we're seeing a stable enrollment coming from those, that means that as an indicator, that they indeed are turning over. So, so obviously, we've got more work to do and more refinement of the model. But just want to let you know that it's not done.
Okay, it's showing a big shot of understanding. So I think what I heard you say was, you looked at Green Meadow, High Meadow, you assessed the yield kind of over time, a little bit of before and after, and the yield pre-turnover, post-turnover was about the same?
No, what I'm saying is that, that DeYoung is, is providing us the enrollment by subdivision by high school, by middle school, and by elementary. So it's effectively a 13-year snapshot of the age of those children in those subdivisions. So if we see the decline in the yield from high school to elementary, that's, we believe, is an indicator that there are fewer young children coming to school district from, from that subdivision.
Okay, because that'll be, because if I recall correctly, through the redistricting exercise, the hypothesis was some of those subdivisions are turning over. And what, what's moving in versus what moved out, the yields were higher.
Again, there were some subdivisions. I took, you know, I love spreadsheets. So I just took the spreadsheet, calculated the yield, and did a sort by high to low. And indeed, some of the subdivisions were, yield was increasing from high school to elementary. Some of them are declining, a lot of them are staying the same. So it was enough to say there may be something there, and we need to look further at it.
Okay.
And I believe that a lot of what you were talking about was the transition of what, I believe they called them the lightning spots or hotspots of the district. So some neighborhood, some areas of the district growing faster than others. And we looked at like a 10, 10-year shot. So it, it is going to be, I think it's going to be, I applaud the executive. I think it's going to be tough to understand how those hotspots change. Because they do change.
Sure.
It is, and the critical part of that is, this report stating is, is quite different from any other report we've had. I just look ahead- I just look ahead, we have zero schools on this report, and we've never had that as long as I've been standing up here doing this. That doesn't say we don't have some really significant challenges, but it kind of says we've got to change the focus of the report a little bit. And that's why we asked Tracy to do this enrollment by school because, you know, you can drown in half of an inch, half of six inches of water because it's not all the same. So we could have certain schools that have excess capacity, but yet the births can't sustain in other schools.
Yeah.
Right.
And just one quick, on the, this birth to kindergarten ratio, have we been able to benchmark that to other communities? Because one thing, I guess we need to be careful of in that ratios as some of the housing patterns change.
Yeah.
And you get the multifamily, then you could get a
Tracy.
You could get a spike in birth, but you don't get the conversion to kindergarten because
And our thoughts is
When you purchase them, you purchase
Then that whole change is so different, then it'd be very hard to get a good benchmark.
So we don't think we can get another benchmark? Or doesn't Healy have other clients that have similar dynamics?
What we have done is looked at the zip codes that, you know, are surrounding in the area, that is part of the report. On page nine of the report. So we include kind of all this around these zip codes. We can see kind of a total number of births in the area. And again, there hasn't been a huge amount of change, but I can look at it in relationship to the kind of gardens that surround the districts, if that's something, it's like page two.
Yeah, I only have, did we have actually the Young report or I only have this, the development committee one? So I guess my page nine is different than your page nine.
Yeah, yeah. It's in the exhibit.
I don't have that one.
It should be in first class, it's in the exhibit.
Oh, I thought it wasn't what you
It's in the exhibit.
I've got this one.
It looks like.
That's what I need, thank you.
It should be on
I have to focus and try with holding it.
No.
There's two of them, it's right next to each other. Looks like one, I've heard of one of them.
Thank you.
So from Tracy's report, just going to look at the last three years, the 10-year, 20 through 23, and you're going to see that at that time, enrollment scope becomes pretty flat. Again, I'm going to caution this, that based upon the building doesn't boom, and you know, we don't have a lot of turnover and increase in the birth rate. So there's some, you know, risk in the forecast as there is in any forecast. So if we start and turn to the next page and look at the high school, and the high school is the, is our problem, as we have known it is. What we're seeing there is that our high school enrollment peaks in the 2021 school year that we had at that time, three high schools, that we've got an average high school enrollment of 2,376. And again, next page, we said, well, let's take a look at that because again, it's the old, you've gone six inches of water. But let's turn our focus to the middle school. As you know, last year, I think every year we've had middle school sticks on the forecast. We have removed it this year. And if you look there, what you're going to see is that we reached our peak of middle school enrollment in the year, I think it is in 17
2017, 18.
1718, where we are 404th over capacity. We talked to Jeff and said, hey, can you guys accommodate 404 additional without building another middle school? And the answer is, yeah, we can make that work. So we said, okay, what's our, we want to make sure we have the actual capacity here. So we jacked up, or not jacked up, I'm sorry, I had a twisted words. We have the actual capacity of Olentangie Middle School at 1,100. And we have proved that we can do that because we've done it before. In the last year's report, we had it sitting at 900. And we know we can do 1,100 because of historical precedence.
So I guess that is the question, if you can do it there, couldn't you do it at the others as well?
Well, and again, that's the question. But if you turn to the next page and say, okay, is the distribution even? And unfortunately, it's not. And that becomes the bigger challenge than the average. It becomes a challenge that, for example, if you look at Berkshire, we have a serious, you know, overcrowding issue, but if you look at Hyatt's or you look at Liberty, you don't. What it's showing is that Westside Middle Schools do not have the enrollment demand that some of the other schools are going to have. So we don't, we're descriptive, not prescriptive here, but we can say there's an opportunity to do something about that.
But yeah, and this was the, if we think back to the dialogue we had last year versus the dialogue we're having this year, where the capacity issues were at Liberty High School, yet it appears that the capacity issues are at the East Side Middles, which don't, it appears to be inconsistent.
Go to the next page. The next page, then we look at the same thing about the high school level. Again, we had Tracy run a roll forward basis for enrollment at the high schools based on current enrollment, you know, current district guidelines. And it was kind of interesting. We knew that we were going to have, we knew when we looked at this last year, I think we gave her a board, where we're looking at what can we do? We knew that we were over capacity on every school, that we're going to have a problem there. What this shows is that it kind of rolls through the district, again, based upon current districting boundaries, that we peak out at Liberty in 1819, we peak out Olentangie in the year 2021, and we peak out Orange at the end of it in the 10th year of the forecast. But yet our high school, overall high school enrollment peaks out in 2021. But so it's not, it's going to be a mental problem as we get capacities at the different schools at different years in the plan, in forecasts, I should say.
So I guess this somewhat goes back to my earlier question for Healy, in that, like any forecast, the near-term credibility is much stronger than the out-term credibility.
Absolutely.
So what is a standard error deviation in the out-years to say, these projections that pose us problems in 1718, 1819, are they within the sampling error or not sampling error, but the statistical deviation within the projection error? Or are they strongly credible?
We, I think we've got more risk at elementary than we do at the, at the higher, especially to high school, because the high school kids are in the district now. So it's really easy to just kind of bootleg them forward. Every year, we look at the, what do you call, survival ratio from grade to grade, and we see that jumps around a bit. I think this year, we hear 1% like that.
Right.
I can't remember. But what we do, we take a rolling average of the change by grade and use that, you know, we keep modifying the forecast, keep modifying the model by previous year behavior. But again, I want to caution that if we see the housing permits go up, we're likely to see that ratio, that survival ratio also go up from 1% to 2%. So over a 10-year plan, a 2% yield is going to give you a pretty good significant increase in enrollment.
Good.
Any more questions on high school, middle school?
This might be a good place to, Julie, who could not join us this evening, had a couple of questions. So let me go ahead and on her behalf.
So I asked the second one already.
Yeah, that's what I thought. That's what I thought, we kind of covered it a little bit. In the DeYoung report on page 28. Comparison to 2011 enrollment projection, the numbers in pre-K escalated each year, ending at 663 students in 21, 22.
Yeah, that's been asked and answered.
Okay.
So yeah, I didn't, until I read it, so that's okay, that's okay. Redress that one.
And then the other one, I was thinking, we covered numbers.
Yeah, so Julie's question three is around bond money. So
Yeah, that's
A statement you made, Mr. Allen, is there's no new schools in this projection. Julie wanted to make a point, I think it's an important point, that even though the voters did approve funding for Elementary 16, those bonds have not been issued, therefore there's no tax liability incurred. And while the approval's there, there's no, there's not a taxpayer, say, issue until the bonds get issued.
Correct.
So while we have the authority, it doesn't mean we have to do it. And it's, you know, this board will have to get comfortable that while we have the authority, if there's no need, there'll be no need to issue the bonds.
Yeah, I agree, right.
For Elementary 16?
Yes.
And then we would, if we were to use, try to use that authorization for a different building, we'd have to discuss at the board repurpose or voter approval for repurpose.
Right.
Yeah, I want to point out that again, the committees
That's not what you guys are recommending.
Making no recommendation for high schools. We're looking for board guidance, we're looking for 2020 guidance from Mark in terms of how the academic program goes shake out so that we can then act as advisor committee to UAG wants to in terms of how we meet that need. Elementary, we took Elementary 16 off the table. If you look there, again, because the births are reasonably flat, you're not seeing that the yield, the survival between birth and kindergarten is changing much, that we're accommodating the current enrollment, that again, you just don't see a need for them forward to Elementary 16. Now again, and I did the criticism of my report, there are differences in enrollment between the elementary schools. Some of them are certainly more crowded than others. So I think you mentioned it every year, there's always this challenge of how you get even distribution amongst the schools. One thing I did notice that the, if you remember that the elementary model is based upon students per section, so I kind of look at what was last year, what is this year. What I noticed is that our students per section or students per classroom in grades three to five inched up a little bit, led from about 23 and a half students last year, about 23.7 this year. The pre-K kindergarten one and two stayed decently constant, but I still use that 23 students per enrollment for driving the model. So even though it's all inched up, I said, well, I'm not going to jack that up to 24 to stay at 23.
It's interesting because a half, a half a point on that ratio is
Yeah.
Almost a building.
Yeah, and we know, and know that that model's very sensitive to the number of students per section.
What's interesting is you, one of the charts that Becky showed, shows that ratio continuing to climb, right? Because it's in essence a scale factor of a large district where you can get those ratios higher and better utilize that brick and mortar instead of building to buildings.
And the other thing, Ken, it's Michelle there, Michelle's here. Anyway, we wanted to reconcile the model to the number of actual classrooms in elementary as Sandy checked, make sure the model's still holding true. So we had Gordon share with me about all the district and trying to count elementary classrooms. And she did a great job, and we are using the confidence that the model is correct in terms of counting elementary classrooms. And the last page is empty, shows no schools.
Other questions or comments? Rob, Tracy, doing a great job, I love the committee and your firm. Thank you for being here. And with the 2020 presentation, I've spoken to Ralph about this, but with that presentation, you might like to be here just to see how this all fits together.
We would, yeah, definitely would like, appreciate the opportunity. I think to that point, I think we need to bring 2020 and Development Committee in a little better opinion and a better sync here. I think there's a synergy there that we need to explore.
So I agree, Mr. Allen, and I hope that the two of those groups together will start to address this capacity.
Yes.
And get our arms around maybe an updated view of what capacity really means. Because we're, I think we've done, it's, as we've discovered, it's easier to get your arms around elementary capacity, right? Because you go classrooms, count chairs. It's a fairly static schedule than when you get it to the middles and highs, where there's more flexibility. And we've got to get our arms around that capacity.
And that's going to be part of the important assignment. Is that study?
Because that, just like that 23 to 23 and a half is a significant change, addressing capacity could put you in a different spot on what you conclude building needs are.
If you recall, Andy Kerr had done a study, and Mr. Gordon took that and took it into another level of sophistication, and Scott has taken that to another level yet. I was very impressed by his report about three weeks ago, a month ago, whenever that was. And that's what we're going to be seeing in December.
I might add that this capacity piece has to be driven at this level, even though we're giving individuals the responsibility. I think we've had this conversation, there's a, there are numbers out there, 16, 900, 650, that I think over time, there's no, there's no policy, there's no written, it's a, this is what's been done.
Well, if I get it out for a minute.
Yes.
And they're often referred to as board-approved or board
That's correct.
Capacity.
And I think
They may have been discussed at a board meeting. It doesn't mean there was sufficient analysis for us to sit here and conclude with certainty, but those are in fact hard.
Well, and this goes back a number of years. And you might recall, in fact, it's Board Policy 7250.1, where we removed any reference to numbers, the 16, 9, 600 numbers. And now the language is, as the building needs to be effective, it's that kind of language. And Lynn and I have spoken about this policy because it's actually part of a policy that addresses some other issues about temporary facilities, those kinds of things. And she and I discussed about even pulling that out and giving it more weight and more noticeable regarding that there are no more numbers. It's about what does the building need to be in its capacity to still maintain its mission? And so we talked about actually revisiting 7250 in that regard.
But I believe what Ralph is saying is his job is easier if he understands specifics when these numbers start coming out. And we all have opinions. These are, this is, to me, this is the one thing that's facing us, that we all need to be very specific on. This is obviously, this is a Monday morning quarterback's favorite. I can sit there and anything that is said, I can tell you why it's wrong. And what we, what's critical in this whole piece is we know where everybody's coming from and understanding what capacity is moving forward. Because we have the solution to a lot of this already in our minds, and we have various solutions in regard to the building piece. Because I think you've heard us say for several years, our dilemma is how do we continue to grow and stop building? And we continue to look for ways. So I would throw out there and say, just because we made K-5 buildings in the past doesn't mean our elementaries are always K-5. Just because our middle schools are, you know, six, seven, eight, doesn't mean it always has to be. And if we do happen to change it, it doesn't mean it's going to permanently be that way. But I think it's critical to, that at the board level, we give directions to 2020, the Development Committee. And I would be very interested in knowing where each individual board member is. In regard to what capacity is, I can identify problems. I want to know solutions. to what capacity is, I can identify problems. I want to know solutions. And I guess when I throw that out and say, okay, let's have this capacity conversation, we can have all the best reports in the world, but if we're not in agreement with those reports, it doesn't matter. So I would venture to say the other way around. I'd be interested in knowing what each individual board member thinks and what the capacity of every building is.
I agree with your first statement with the traditional use of the buildings will change. You can have the ones that have excess capacity and room. You can take kids from the high school who are doing electives and use those classrooms, or have other kids use those at the same time and make room. We're talking about temporary units in the front, just while the bulge is going through, or, I mean...
I'd be interested to know, for example, Mr. White, how many kids should we put in a high school, in your opinion?
I don't know.
Can I take a crack at that question? Can I take a crack at that question? I think you can't ask that question, okay? It's not a valid question. And especially if you look at the high school, I don't think we can measure capacity in terms of number of students. Because as your academic program is changing, it's not a kid we're putting in, it's not a student we're putting there. I think what we're measuring capacity is, well, how many academic classrooms do we have? How many non-academic classrooms do we have? How many restroom do we have? How many lockers do we have? How many parking spaces do we need? So we need to look not at the school as a homogenious, we need to look at it in terms of capacities for the different architectural restrictions that are impacted as we change that academic program.
I would agree with you 100%, Ralph, but in all due respect, we haven't had a problem saying high schools are sixteen hundred. And as soon as we get there, we build a new one. And I think that's one thing that we've debated over the years of sixteen hundred doesn't mean a new high school. Because we have alternative programs, and we have different ways of educating in today's world, which is wide, and one of our high schools now has seventeen hundred in it. And that would be the challenge that I have. I agree, you can't put a number on it, but you have to start somewhere. And we've been extremely comfortable for 10 years saying sixteen, nine, six fifty, six hundred.
Well, I think those numbers, I mean, we've had this conversation before. I think sixteen hundred was a number that was decided on, and we just set it, and they all have to be the same. And I think that's, that's not the reality of what we live in.
Right.
We should, obviously, we can fit seventeen hundred, maybe we can fit nineteen hundred, but maybe we need two thousand at Liberty, and we need less at the others. And then we'll need two thousand at Orange and only need fifteen hundred. So you start saying, we can move kids around, people get a little crazy. But, but I think the overarching thing is, they don't all have to be identical. I don't think you can say every high school has to have sixteen hundred. That's one of the issues, in that there's been this longstanding, I've had this conversation for eight years, long before I was on the board, with previous employee, who said that the community would be upset if one of the high schools was bigger than the other two, and if we built on to only one. And I just think that's a fallacy. I just think the community isn't, you know, saying one school can't be bigger than the other. So those are the kind of things we should be looking at from, I mean, I love when I open up this report and it's the same number all the way across. I'm like, that's just, that's not the reality of capacity. The schools sure are built similarly, but not identical, based on what programs they offer. You know, temporaries is a whole, is a whole nother, I mean, I lived here from California, there wasn't a school that didn't have a trailer.
Right.
And, but that's not necessarily, you know, going to be an acceptable thing here. But I think the conversation is around, what does each school need? And what does each school, when you look, I mean, those numbers just shocked me, how, how much they flip to how much we're going to be over in one place and over in another. And it's a bigger planning discussion than just how many bodies can we fit.
Correct.
And from all the Development Committee talks, to Ralph's point, it's rarely the classrooms that are the issue.
Right.
So we can't feed that many kids without starting at nine in the morning and feeding them until two in the afternoon. And we can't, they can't go to the bathroom, and they don't have enough lockers, and they don't have, you know, so it's, it's more common space issue than classroom issue in most of the cases that, that we've seen. I mean, that might not be true when we're thirty percent over capacity, but, so...
I would say, well, I would say, one, I totally agree with that, and two, if numbers stay as they are, which, that's the million dollar question, I understand that, we do have the flexibility to be able to educate our kids without building. We do have that flexibility. And I think, again, I'll go back to that whole piece from a board level. It's critical, for example, Columbus State is a critical piece of this, Ohio State's a critical piece of this. There are some buildings that we have looked at, other places that are critical pieces of this. And elementary sixteen is a critical piece of this, and we can't think of it as a traditional K-five. It may be something else. But I think we have the facilities in place if things stay as they are. Now, I'll only throw that number out of, of two thousand, Ralph, and I agree, that's a bad question to ask. But the only reason you must ask it is because it's firmly entrenched, because I've done the coffee chats, that sixteen hundred's the number. So you better throw a number out, if you're going to put twenty-one, or two thousand, or nineteen, you better start throwing a different number out at this level. Because when we go out there, everybody says, you guys trying to put more than sixteen hundred dollars in those buildings? And I'll say, well, we have seventeen hundred and one already. What? And they're shocked. And getting back to your, all not the same, we have a seventeen hundred, a fourteen hundred, and a thirteen fifty. So they aren't, they aren't all the same. They don't play in the same leagues. So you're right, they're not the same, even though we like to, to think that they are. They get the same resources, they get the same educational product, but the whole makeup is not the same. And it won't be. I agree with you 100% there.
I'm not quite sure what you're looking at from us, though, when you say you want to know what we
This is, yeah, this is what I think would be more helpful than asking your static question of, give me a number.
Right.
This board should be providing a decision framework on what are our priorities, right? So for example, we should be charging the Development Committee and the 2020 Committee, it's coming up, of as many creative solutions to addressing the enrollment projection challenges without building new buildings as possible.
Correct.
And that historically, one could argue that we answered the enrollment challenge, and the first answer was building, the second answer was building, the third answer was building. Now we're saying that building should be a choice of last resort before we've exhausted all other options, whether it's schedule, temporary solutions, minor adjustments to building space, vis a vis the adding a wing on dialogue that we had about a year ago, before we go build a big thirty-acre campus with another sixty-five million dollar high school. Because the last thing I want to see in this district is a fourth high school.
Better.
I think there are a ton of solutions
I don't think there's anyone
Ahead of us.
And there's the two buildings not even
But I still get asked the question. I've got asked questions three times this week. So are you guys going to fill the fourth high school? Not if I can help it. So...
Well, that's why, again, the policy language was changed to eliminate this memorialization of a fixed number. And I think, again, we have to give it more strength and treat it even as a separate policy. But it goes right to this conversation of 2020, and what their mission is, is just what you spoke to. And that they do have to have a better relationship with Development Committee. You know, we've even talked, and I brought it up, a Development Committee meeting about, and at the 2020 Executive Committee meeting, about what happens to 2020 Committee. Does it go away after it does its findings report, the end of the year, beginning of next year? Or does it, in some capacity, roll into a subgroup of the Development Committee? And all those things, I think, play together.
Depends on what they say. Depends on what they say.
Well, certainly. But remember, in the 2020 presentations, not only are they going to be going to see that Scott has put together, but remember, Mark Rafe presented that, that report on changing class times, et cetera.
Yes.
So you take all of those two studies right there, and you pull all those together.
So many variables involved in this whole picture. So many.
And, and you, you know, we've looked at two buildings, two existing buildings already that could be utilized, and of course, what Columbus State does at some point in time. So your conversations with the Columbus State people comes into that picture. So it's, it's multi, multi-level. And I like it going through the Development Committee, and we've talked about, we've got to get these two committees, Ralph and I have talked about, getting these two committees closer in alignment and tied together.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ralph.
Tracy, Ralph.
I'll be back to the committee, my class is done, so I'll be back on Wednesday.
Mr. King, before you move on, the board has historically taken formal action to accept this report. I don't know if you're
Thank you for that. So why would you, is there a motion to accept the report on the Development Committee? Second, please.
Second.
Discussion, please take the role. Thank you, Ben.
Ms. Dunbar? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes, thank you. And our third item under discussion items is from Ms. Martin, a first reading of board policy updates.
Good evening, everybody. This is your fall review of Miola. And so I sent you, one of the nice things Miola service provides districts with, is when they, you know, fall in a spring update, they will also include the rationale and the reasoning behind their proposed suggested changes. And so I sent those changes to you. I hope that provided some explanation with those bolded additions in the policy language. And as I noted in my message to you, those, those policies were reviewed by Miola with the exception of three. And those three would be changes that the Policy Committee is recommending, fifteen twenty, the employment of administrators, which has similar language as in thirty-one twenty and forty-one twenty. It's just consistent now with classified, certified, and administrators in regard to relationships. And then Policy seventy-two thirty is a
I was just going to make, you were on employment of administrators?
On fifteen twenty?
Right. The, it's four or five paragraphs down, it talks about the employment of administrative staff members prior to approval by the board is authorized when their employment is required to maintain continuity in the educational program. I don't see why we have, was there some educational emergency that you have to have someone hired before we approve them? And we have meetings every two weeks. It's not like someone's bleeding to death. And it kind of devalues the purpose of the board to vote on authorizing someone to be deployed if they're already been employed.
Well, if you have, if you have, let's say, in August, you have an administrator that leaves at the end of the month, you obviously have to hire a new person. And you've already missed that August board meeting. So you hire that person on an emergency basis, and then you'll formally hire them at the September meeting. And I believe we've had the
We've had that, but it's very rare.
It's very rare. But, but there are those unique circumstances, that you do have that situation, I believe.
I know that, professional, you see it most, like, in transportation, more of the classified side, but you will see in the administrative and teaching.
Absolutely. Almost every year now, not every year administratively, but it will happen across the board. And keep in mind, there are some, some months we only meet once instead of twice.
That's true, too.
Of course, after that July 10th date, you don't like to see anyone leave. But I will also add, you get a staff memo or a board memo every week, and those, if we are getting into an emergency situation, it's in the staff, the board memo, and the invitation to call me for specifics on personnel items is always there for every board member. So even though it may be an emergency that we have to put that person to work, you do have the opportunity if you go through the process.
And then the last policy I want to deploy, and talk about in addition to fifteen twenty, actually, there's two left, seventeen thirty, and that's a recommendation, just a slight modification from the Treasurer's Office on seventy-two thirty. And then the final policy is twenty-two eleven, multicultural inclusive education. And this is a policy that's replacing our current thirty thirty human relations policy. And I think it's a little bit more aligned to current practices. But if you notice, it's rather general in terms. And what I am planning to do next is take some of this language in twenty-two eleven and expand it in depth through the administrative guidelines.
And this one involved, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
This one involved Jody, who's the HR Director, which Ashlyn spent a lot of time with her on this issue as well.
She did, as did Heather Camacho, the Diversity Committee, as did the chairpersons from the Diversities, Professional Development, and Curriculum and Instruction, and the Achievement and Accountability Office. So I had, I had a lot of input putting this together. So this is, this is very new language.
The language where it says, the second sentence down, the school curriculum, instructional materials, and professional development should reflect an inclusive perspective.
What page are you on now?
Oh, sorry, six of forty-seven. Starts with the second sentence, the school curriculum, instructional materials and professional development should reflect, should reflect an inclusive perspective to help students appreciate and value similarities and differences in all people. I think that we, the people that wrote this have confused value with respect and recognition. You can respect that people are different, and you can recognize their races and religions, but everybody has their own set of values, and that's what makes you unique. And right here, we have a policy that promotes the valuation of one race over the other, with the, teach them how to value similarities and differences in people. I mean, putting a value on race is basically what this is doing. And differences, why would you value one over the other? That's what you call racism, or discrimination. And I think most people value academic achievement or sports achievement, like good college football players. I think we should need to focus on the academic part and not on the race. And then the second piece that's right beneath it, says the board believes and declares that infusion of specific content throughout the district's curriculum will promote acceptance and appreciation of diverse groups of people. The infusion of diversity across the entire school curriculum and textbooks, I think, will force an unhealthy preoccupation with oneself or one's race. And it will change the focus from, of education from reading, writing, arithmetic, to the valuation of students based on the skin color, religion, whatever, instead of just focusing on what the course material is. And I think acceptance, which is what this says it's supposed to solve for students, is getting A's on tests, or standing up to a bully. And the strength of a character, that is what breeds acceptance among the students. Not saying, okay, everyone wear a name tag so I can say, on mine, I would say, Adam White, I'm white, and I'm heterosexual, and I come from America. I mean, basically, is what these policies are focusing on. There's nothing special about being white, black, or Muslim, or whatever. It's about what you do in life. And this policy is going the exact opposite direction of that. The students need to earn respect and status, and not have it handed to them like participation trophies by the district.
Are you looking for other input?
Yeah.
Page three, books forty-seven. Concerned, and it's in here a couple times, the last sentence in the third half, conversely, employees are subject to disciplinary action up to and including termination if they are aware of a violation of federal, state, or local law that the board has authority to correct, and they do not make report confirmed in writing to their immediate supervisor. It could be the immediate supervisor that they're reporting. And so up above, it gives them other options on reporting. I would put some sort of language that says, to the appropriate person, or, because if it's their immediate supervisor that they have an issue with, and they didn't report it to their immediate supervisor in writing, they could be fired. So I would just look at that, and it's in here three or four times, that they can be fired if they don't confirm it in writing to their immediate supervisor. But yet above, you say, if it is the immediate supervisor, you can tell someone else. So I would just, I would just look at that language from a legal person to say, reported to the appropriate person. it to the appropriate person." And then on 20 of 47, oh, it's the same thing.
The same, it appears there as well.
Yeah. And 22 of 47, it's also there.
Same.
Yeah. And then, the one I had the most questions about was 29 of 47, the use of the phones at the school by the kids. You know, it used to be that, you know, they used them, they got taken away, given, the parents had to come pick them up. I know currently, I thought this year, we were more in the option B usage than option C. And I noticed we've chosen option C, that they can't use their phones at all during the day. It's my understanding, and maybe this is just a building thing, that they're allowed to use them at lunch, they're allowed to use them during school activities, school-related functions. So I'm pretty sure we're currently operating under option B. Option C is much more restrictive.
Okay.
So I would double-check that, because this is saying they can't even use them on school grounds during school hours, and that's not, that's not true.
Didn't we address that in the handbook?
We did.
Last year.
Yeah. I thought we changed...
Did we make it consistent with our...
Yeah. So I'm thinking we're much closer to option B. I'm doing this because my daughter would die.
That's how I remember the conversation, too.
Yes. But I guess, is that what we want?
Well...
Well, we put wireless in the buildings...
No, well, we put wireless in the building more for the second part of C, which is to use those devices for instructional purposes, not for posting pictures to Instagram at lunch, which is what I see all day with teachers. Right?
It was my understanding that, I'm looking at the high school level, so I don't know, that the kids are, they're allowed to use their phones at lunch, and they're allowed to, certainly on school property. I mean, to say you can't even use them on school grounds during school hours, that's, that just seems incredibly restrictive, unnecessary. Maybe it's different by school level, but...
And, and again, if that's the policy, we're not following that policy.
Yeah.
Because last year, we had the long conversation from the Handbook Committee, and put in the handbook from the middle school level on up that phones could be used. Now, we did have some control over those phones. But in response to your, your comment, it would be no different with technology as it was when paper and pencils started. If you use paper and pencil the right way, it's very good. Use it the wrong way, it's very bad. We didn't ban paper and pencils when kids cheated or whatever that may be, and/or staff. So we will have a job in education also, in the technology standard.
And there's a whole lot of restrictions...
The policy doesn't go with the handbook.
I understand.
And there's a whole lot of restrictions within the next section about what they can use it for, taking pictures and all that kind of stuff. And so I would just, I would just be concerned that if that is the policy, nobody knows it. And...
It's probably closer to B.
It's, yeah. And then, this is, I meant to look this up, and this is more of a question than a, on 38 of 47, I thought the law was changed to that there's three. It says, "Prior to September 1st, superintendent compares and plans to make up of at least five school days." Was that just, we're picking five as a number, even though the state, isn't it three now that we get? Didn't it change?
Well, it did.
It did, but I want to...
It's back.
Anyway, back to five.
Case it, turn it back.
And he changed ours. Yes.
And, sorry, one more, and then I'll, I'll be quiet. 40 of 47. I'm just curious why we only teach, it looked like from what I was reading, personal and safety assault prevention in students in grades K through six. Why that's a, why we don't do it all the way through high school.
I will check that, that training comes out of Curriculum and Instruction Department, so I will check on that.
Yeah, I mean, there may be other things we're teaching that's just not listed specifically that, but a whole lot of things happen after sixth grade.
I've got one more in here. Are you finished?
I think so, yeah.
On page eight of 47, two questions. The first one has, at the top of the page, on page eight of 47, it has crossed out the Board directs, and it just has superintendent shall. Why remove the Board power in that sentence? Why was it removed? It said, "In order to achieve the aforementioned goal, the superintendent shall," and it starts to talk about the curriculum. There's a line through it.
I see it.
And then the second part...
I will check on that one.
Well, let me, can I ask you a question? Does it, what's the difference between the two? Well, if we direct him to her, he shall, it's going to get done either way, right?
Well, when the Board, if you have the Board directs, and that is implying that the Board is supervising it.
But if the word shall is in there, it's like you're saying must. So if he doesn't do it, he's violating the policy and be subject to disciplinary action and termination.
But in this one, it says superintendent shall...
He shall do it, and if he doesn't do it, then he's not adhering to the policy.
But I think one is...
Could be a she, by the way.
One is implying the Board is looking over. And the other one doesn't.
I guess I'm missing the subtlety in the language change.
One, you have the Board directs it, they're the directors, so they're overseeing it. The other one, you just have a superintendent. Most people like Wade. If he leaves, you get someone else in here, another superintendent. You have that superintendent doing it, and you have no direction over.
When you chose the superintendent, who did it?
Well, the policy also says he shall do it, and it's the policy that's directing it, not the Board. And the Board writes the policy. So I guess I'm, I'm struggling. I think the wording, Board directs the superintendent to review current, I don't, I don't see a difference, because it's, it's the policy that's directing the actions that the Board, and the Board has designed this. We could put the Board directs in front of every single one of these, because the Board's the one writing the policy.
Well, that was the only line at the top that talks about who's doing it, that's why I mentioned it.
Yeah. But I'm saying, I think it was probably taken out because it's inconsistent with the language with the entire rest of the document, because you have to say that every time. Every time you talk about the superintendent doing it, you have to say the Board directs. But we're directing him by putting it in the policy that we, to Kevin's point, the Board is directing the policies, and the policies are directing the action.
That's one way to look at it, all right. For the curriculum content beneath it, where the superintendent's reviewing it, "Review current proposed courses of study and textbook to detect any bias upon the protected classes, ascertaining whether or not supplemental materials singly or taken as a whole fairly depict the contribution of both genders, various races, ethnic groups, et cetera, towards the development of human society, rewriting history," basically. I mean, it's another focus on race versus the content, going back and rewriting everything. When we study Albert Einstein's theory or Isaac Newton's telescope, we don't, the fact that they're both white people is irrelevant. And infusing that in there, it distracts the kids from what they're supposed to be learning.
How does that infuse them? Can you give me an example? I'm trying to follow what you're saying.
Okay, okay. For like, a good example, from the Diversity Chair, when she spoke, she talked about math. And she said, "In math, we, we will make sure to put in there and infuse that kids know that it was a black mathematician or it was a Latino mathematician that, that did the theories." That, the color of their skin is irrelevant when you're learning the theory of math, when you're talking about evaluation. It's, so the kids are, everything that they're thinking about now is, okay, here's the theory, but, oh, what race were they? Were they homosexual, and were they, okay, I had to make sure I don't discriminate against, like, I know what, what race everyone was. Do you think those people want to be remembered because they're a bunch of white people, or black, or whatever? I, I just think it's, it's another, you're rewriting history and making the focus...
No, you're just actually saying what history was, you're not rewriting anything.
Those things being written.
Well, that's what it says in here.
It's rewriting history when we just talk about the white people that have, have contributed, so...
So the language is to detect any bias.
The language is about not saying someone's something they're not, it's just making sure.
Well, it's not even relevant when you're talking about math, though. But that's...
It is to a kid, maybe, who's struggling in math, who thinks because of the color of his skin, he's not able to, to comprehend something.
But that's about feeling good about yourself. That's not the theory of the math you're trying to learn, though.
We, we could argue diversity all day long.
Oh, I know, I know.
On opposite ends of that spectrum, Adam. But that's not what this policy is talking about.
I disagree.
It's making sure, it's not saying, "Let's make sure we mention as many black people as we mention white people." What the policy's saying is, we're making sure it's fairly depicted, the contributions of whatever those contributions are, that it's depicted fairly, and we're not excluding something based on race.
Well, if you, if you want to promote understanding of race and other cultures, then offer a course in race studies or Muslim faith. You don't have to infuse it in every single subject. It's a whole day of, of that subject.
Well, most studies would disagree with you when talking about diversity at all.
Yeah, no.
Because yes, it has to be infused, otherwise it doesn't get talked about. But you, you can argue that, that not talking about it makes it irrelevant, and every study that I've ever seen would disagree with you. So I would love to sit down and talk about diversity and inclusion, which there's entire volumes of things to read about that talks about what really makes a difference in diversity and inclusion, and it has nothing to do with ignoring it.
Well, I'm not talking about ignoring, I'm talking about being focused on the subject that you're having at hand.
I don't think it changes the focus, and is there anything else, Linda?
There's nothing.
Okay. Any other questions, Paula? Thank you very much. Do we have any public participation?
We do not.
Thank you. We have treasurer action items, Becky.
Would like to present treasurer action items A and C for approval.
Motion, please.
Hold on, I need to find my answers.
It's the financials and the appropriations. A and C are the appropriate, or the financials and the appropriations. I'm going to present the...
A through C?
A and, A and C, and then I will present the other two. So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Oops. Sorry, we voted on...
Discussion? A and C.
This is the vote on A and C right now? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. King?
Yes. And...
Then I present treasurer action items B and D for approval. Those are the minutes and the donations.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
It amazes me every time, and I always comment on it, but the fact that groups like PTOs at Scioto Ridge, which I used to be a proud member of when my children were there, are donating $23,000 to the district, is, the, the work of those, those parents and those volunteers and those students, frankly, continues to inspire and amaze me, and good job. Those PTO groups and those athletic boosters and the music boosters, I can't say enough about how lucky we are to have them in our district.
Please call the board, Becky.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
So, am I going to interject a question?
Sure.
Are we capturing the booster con abuse in the athletic departments?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I think, did we discuss that, what, two months ago?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And Dr. Lucas, superintendent action items?
Present superintendent action items A through H, please, with the reminder that we pulled A5 off and added two.
I wanted to separate, let me see, A1 through 5 and D, and pull those out separate.
A1 through 4 since D...
Oh, that's right, sorry.
And what was the other one, Adam? Say that again, A1, 2, 3, 4.
Yeah, and D.
And D. Okay, so I will present superintendent action items A6 through 8, B, C, E, F, G, H, for approval, please.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Please call the board.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Present superintendent action items A1, 2, 3, 4, and item D for approval, please.
Motion, please.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
And discussion? Please call the board.